All these guys who get knocked out of private health insurance to conform to Obamacare. Happens to us.
You're talking about county employees? Or...
Mm-hmm.
Well, my understanding is that there is a... you're not eligible. If you quit... if you have insurance and you quit it, then you're ineligible for the Obamacare or any kind of discounts.
Good morning, how are you?
Because the idea is they want to... they knew that would be a...
Yes.
I'm hearing from what I've...
Why are you wearing green? Is it because of our 130?
Did you?
And you still wore it? That's okay.
There is that aspect. No, it didn't happen with us. I mean, our premium is only going up five years. Well, but our... oh, I see as far as being compliant with Obamacare. Yeah, that's an interesting question. We probably should ask the authority people what their predictions are going to be when we come under that response of that law next year, what we anticipate.
Oh.
That's the big quote, right?
You want to bring leftovers and save yourself a snack, huh?
Maybe someone thought it was mine.
Oh, that's a great picture. The show that when I used to... Several runways. They were seen through. There were several runways, not just the one.
It's a great picture.
I tell you what's neat to do is go up to Castle and look at that place and try to remember what it must have been with all those bombers parked out there. That runway.
Wow. I was there when it started to get to Tuesday. My cousin worked at Old Trinity.
They had the scramble area where the pilots stayed at night.
It's amazing.
Looked out there, all those tunnels. It's kinda neat to drive around there and look at it.
Yeah.
Big old fuel tanks are all still there where they used to keep the fuel.
Mr. Ennis, would you stop talking about Castles so we can convene our board meeting over here? All right. Well, good morning to everyone and thank you all for attending today's board meeting. Glad to see a nice audience here. We're going to stand and salute the flag of the greatest country on this planet and that's going to be followed by a moment of silence. We are going to be led this morning by Supervisor Cox.
Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one mind, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right. The first item on our agenda this morning is to recognize Sergeant James McKay. However, we did have a longtime member of our Sheriff's Department pass away in his services are this morning, so we are going to be rescheduling that recognition. So item one is off calendar. Item number two on our agenda today is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the week of October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. A little bit of a tongue twister there, sorry about that. My bad. But it's still Red Ribbon Week and it's very important nonetheless. Sorry about the little slippage. So you can make me feel a little bit better, Mr. Valencia. Please come forward.
Thought Albert Fudd was here.
Well, thank you very much. It's great to see all of you. And Mr. Vanderpoel, I was afraid that I was going to be the one to do that. Thank you for clearing the air. Good morning. It's great to see all of you. My name is Adam Valencia with Tulare County Office of Education. And on behalf of our Tulare County Red Ribbon Committee, I'd like to have them stand really quickly, just to acknowledge everybody, all of our partners. Would you please stand real quick? I know that wasn't part of my script, but I kinda go off the hip sometimes. But I think for me, it's really important that we acknowledge all of our partners in this effort through a partnership with Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare County Health and Human Services. Honestly, Dr. Dirksen and her whole team has just been outstanding in supporting this effort. And I wanted to share with you today that as of last week, we received notice from the U.S. Department of Education that we receive the Drug-Free Communities Grant, which is 125,000 every year for five years, up to 10 years because of these efforts. So thank you very much for that. Also, you know, again, it's so important that we always go back to the cross-systems collaboration and truly this has been exemplified through this committee because it's a mix of students, community members, community-based organizations, education, law enforcement, all of our families have come together for this event. At this point in time, I'd like to show you a video that was produced by students for students.
Red Ribbon Week is a national campaign for communities to unite and take a stand against drugs. The campaign began in 1985 when drug traffickers murdered DEA Agent Kiki Camarena. Since then, communities began displaying red ribbons as a symbol of intolerance towards the use of drugs and their destructive consequences. The Red Ribbon Campaign continues that tradition today in schools and communities across America to educate and promote drug-free living.
Red Ribbon Week is when your school teaches you about drugs and how bad they are.
Red Ribbon Week is when we put red posters up on our campus.
Red Ribbon Week is an awareness against drugs.
Red Ribbon Week is about drugs and not to do them.
Drugs are bad for you because they can make you really, really sick and they can hurt you and they can cause bad things to happen like cancer.
Drugs are bad for you because they make your life shorter.
Drugs are bad for you because they make you drought the entire all the time.
I don't do drugs because I want to have a future.
I don't do drugs because I don't want to die.
I don't do drugs because they're really bad for you and they can make you really sick.
I don't do drugs because I want to succeed at my goals in life.
Join us!
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 Join us in the largest and oldest drug prevention program in the nation.
I love about that video again, produced by students for students and our families. As I mentioned, I think the biggest thing is, you know, Red Ribbon Week has become the most visible prevention awareness campaigns observed annually and gives opportunities for schools, organizations, communities to come together as one. And I truly believe that our community and our county has come together as one for this event and we continue to grow. This is our fourth annual and I'll tell you, it's getting bigger and bigger every year. One of the things that I wanted to share with the group is that, and everybody in the audience, that our students are really putting this together and it's truly service learning at its best when you have students as part of this. It's youth development. It's really creating that cycle of ongoing great achievement, both academically and socially. At this time, I'd like to... actually, I wanted to go back really quickly. The theme for this year, and this has been the national theme, is a healthy me is drug-free. And this year, that's what we're adopting as Tulare County. And obviously, this Saturday, we'll have a chance to really celebrate all that. But at this time, I would like to present each board member with a nice red ribbon. I know Supervisor Ennis already was eyeballing my little ribbon earlier and said, "This is pretty nice." He said, "Hang tight, you're going to get one." So I wanted to take this time to ask each of you to come up. We have our students here from La Sierra and I want to give them a round of applause for being here. They will be presenting each of you with a nice ribbon and also an invitation. So with this big invitation, you're going to see it every day from here on out till Saturday, so I hope you make it, okay? Thank you. Come on up Supervisor Ennis, Supervisor Ashida, Supervisor Wordley, Supervisor Cox.
And Adam, stick around so I can present you this proclamation.
Thank you very much. And we also have some of our TAE students here with us as well. Just as a special invitation, our fourth annual Red Ribbon Week celebration to be held at the International Agri Center, Saturday, October 26, 2013. We, again, as I mentioned, we'd like to present you with these nice red ribbons and I wanted to tell you again, thank you for all your support and ongoing. And now with some of the future funding that's coming our way specifically to support this event, I see this growing more and more every day. So thank you again for your time.
And thank you, Adam, for all of your efforts. I know that it takes a lot of partners to make a week like this happen and I really do commend you and the Office of Education for your leadership in this partnership. So I'm here today to present to you this proclamation proclaiming Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County, and I said it right that time. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation have reached epidemic stages and whereas early substance abuse increases the likelihood of a person developing psychiatric disorders in his or her late twenties and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs and whereas rates of past year alcohol and illicit drug use were lower for youths who have seen or heard drug or alcohol prevention messages in the last year than youths who had not seen or heard the messages at school. Whereas teens are affected by the influences in their lives, family, neighborhood, school and community. When parents, educators, law enforcement, faith organizations and community members unite in opposing illicit drugs, young people are much less likely to engage in drug use. And whereas Tulare County values the health and safety of all of its citizens and whereas Red Ribbon Week is celebrated in Tulare County and every community across the nation during the week of October 23rd through 31st and whereas to help achieve this goal, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Official... or Office of National Drug Control Policy, the National Family Partnership and the Tulare County Department of Mental Health, Alcohol and Other Drug Division unite all residents of Tulare County to participate in Red Ribbon Week 2013. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of October 20 through... 23rd through 31st, 2013, as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County and call upon the citizens, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Tulare County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. Signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpoel, Phil Cox, Steve Wordley, Mike Ennis. So thank you, Adam, and we really appreciate it. If we can get the kids, the students and the partners to come up and take this picture, that'd be fantastic because we know it takes more than just one to make this happen. And make sure you, young folks, spread the message to all your friends and family throughout the community. That would really help make this program very successful. So thank you again for all your efforts.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the adoption of the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Wordley, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your efforts. Next, we're going to move on to item number three on today's agenda and that's public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak during public comment? It can and will be limited to three minutes, even if you are county employee. Denise?
Yes. Good morning, poor Denise Akins with the County Administrative Office. I'm here today on behalf of the Deferred Compensation Committee and Rita Woodard, she would have liked to have been here, but she is out of town in a conference. This week is National Safe for Retirement Week and we have another committee member, Chris Glynn, who'd like to just give a quick couple of points about the week.
Great. Good morning. I'd like to thank the board for, first of all, proclaiming the week of October 20th through October 26th as National Safe for Retirement Week. I also like to thank the board for the continued support of the two retirement plans which are available to the employees of Tulare County, which are the Defined Benefit Plan, or TERCERA, and the Defined Contribution Plan, commonly known as Deferred Comp. Since being appointed to Tulare County's Defined Contribution Committee in January of this year, I've been learning a great deal about how our voluntary retirement plan works. In early September, the committee sent four members, including myself, to the Annual National Association of Government Defined Contribution Administrators Conference in Louisville, Kentucky, where topics included employee communication, generational differences and regulatory updates. The committee recently formed an educational subcommittee with the goal of reaching out to educate the employees of Tulare County about the importance of planning for your future retirement. In Tulare County, we're very fortunate to have available to us what I refer to as the trifecta of retirement income planning, which includes TERCERA, deferred compensation and social security. We can also boast that the participation rate in our voluntary deferred comp plan is currently 47% as compared with the national average of just 26%, which is pretty outstanding. I'd like to encourage all employees of Tulare County to take an active role in planning for your retirement. You can begin by participating in deferred comp with as little as $10 per pay period. Thank you, and I leave you with a theme phrase for this week, which is retirement. It's closer than you think.
And much closer for some of us. Much closer for those like Supervisor Ennis. And you had to learn that phrase while you were in Kentucky, right? The trifecta of retirement plans. Is that... was that part of the conference? That's fantastic. Good deal. Thank you for the announcement. And I do encourage all employees to participate as it is a great program. Are there any other public comments for the board this morning? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period and I'm going to bring it to the board for Board of Supervisors Matters. We're going to start today with Supervisor Wordley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I reported to the board about the Advisory Committee for the Upper Kings River Based and Integrated Regional Water Management Authority, so big mouthful, had recommended that our flood project, which interesting enough is closely related to another odd thing we'll be talking about in our meeting today, which is out by our jail facilities and juvenile facilities, that flood project, which has been promulgated by our folks in our RMA department, was approved by the Upper Kings River Authority to put on their list of projects they support, which means that there will be the possibility of gaining additional funding towards that project from state bond funds. So that was very, very good for us and that's one of the reasons why we're a member of that particular organization. Denise sits on that as well as myself. The other thing is that yesterday in Woodlake, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Transit Center in Woodlake, a very nice facility that was put up in a 90-day period and really turned out beautifully, well-attended, I thought. And the nice thing about this was it was an opportunity to sort of showcase Measure R and our ability to advance dollars to move projects forward. So in this case, had Woodlake had to wait until their transit funding came about over a period of years to be able to build this facility, it would have been many years out. But by being able to advance funds to them, they were able to move this project forward at a good, very good time from a construction standpoint and it's a very nice facility. We have a TCAG retreat and I wanted to remind our board members, as we're all members of TCAG, we'll be meeting up at Three Rivers this Thursday afternoon from 2:00 until 5:00 o'clock and the public is invited to attend that as well. I think that's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you very much. We're now going to move on to Supervisor Ennis.
Oh, that was a surprise.
Yeah, I wanted to surprise you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It scared me. Probably won't even be able to talk. Well, a week ago Monday, we had our meeting on the Lower Tulie GPA at Lower Tulie Irrigation District, which I chaired that committee. We thought we were going to get some kind of a decision on whether we're going to be able to fill Success Dam or not. Now they've put this decision off to the senior oversight group till January. So we're hopeful that with the upcoming season, we hope we have a wet year, that we'll be able to fill Success Dam to its capacity, which is 82.5. Right now, it's probably just like everybody else, we're down to about 4,000 acre feet of Success Dam and lowest it's been since they built the dam in the 50s. So looking forward to that decision. We hope we're going to get a good decision where we can bring a marina back and it'll help benefit the community as far as recreation and flood control and irrigation. So looking forward to that. Friday, I'll be going to the Porterville Developmental Center, senior volunteer luncheon, which is always nice. They're having it this year at Knuckles Ranch, so looking forward to seeing all those folks that volunteer their time for the community. At our KT AAA meeting, we have put a new director in place. Tim Luntz resigned due to his promotion at Health and Human Services and taking his place will be Laura Silva. So congratulations to you as the new director of KT AAA. Appreciate it. Appreciate your service, Tim, in the past and wish the both best luck to all of you. Thank you. And also want to thank all the county employees, especially our Marijuana Task Force and RMA for all their work that they've been doing in trying to clean up our communities of these illegal pot farms and that's a continuing deal, plus all the other code enforcement issues we do have throughout the county. So thank you so much for all your efforts and that's all I have.
All right. Supervisor Cox.
I have a few things. For the first time in many, many years, I took two weeks vacation a few weeks ago. You noticed I wasn't here at our board meeting, the first time I've done two weeks back-to-back in many, many years. While on vacation, I was actually able to attend school and to obtain some certificates that I'd wanted to get for quite a while. So I wasn't off sitting on a beach somewhere enjoying the sun. I was actually working. I had a great time. Last week, I was able to attend two community events representing the board. Went to the Rees for Kids event, which was held on Thursday night at the Convention Center. There were probably 500 or 600 folks there for that. Over $300,000 was raised for youth programs countywide that Rees for Kids supports. Also attended Hands in the Community event on Friday night. There were probably 400 people there attending that and they provide services for less fortunate folks throughout the county. They have a big contingent here in Visalia and a large one in Porterville as well. On Saturday, participated in the Taste the Arts event in Visalia, was able to emcee for a few hours on one of the stages. There were literally thousands of people who attended that event starting on Thursday and it went all the way through Saturday. So it was a very good event. There were some 70 artists from throughout the county, including Springville, Three Rivers, all over the county. It was a great event. Tomorrow, we have at the Holiday Inn from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. a Step Up Law Enforcement Event. We have some 180 law enforcement officials attending a special training that the Step Up is sponsoring. And in the evening, we have approximately 60 individuals attending an event for couples that will be held by the Step Up Group. And then the facilitation is being done by Dr. Kevin Gil Martin, or Gil Martin, who is a psychologist and specializes in helping police officers, law enforcement, deal with emotional issues and the issues of having to be a law enforcement officer. On Thursday, from probably 7:00 until 5:00, we have the Step Up Challenge at the Convention Center here in Visalia. We have approximately 30 junior high schools and high schools participating this year. We figure there will be probably about 400 youth who will be starting approximately 30 service learning projects in their community. So we're very excited about that. That's all I have.
That's it?
For right now.
Okay. I'll now look to Mr. Alan Ashida.
Last two weeks ago, we had our first Step Up event in Woodville and it was attended by hundreds of people. I believe it was very successful. The other issue we had in Woodville with the school district is we have safe route to schools issues with trucks driving in front of the middle, the grammar school. And what was surprising to me is that there's not even a school sign up on the road that designates that it's a school zone. So our staff is meeting with the Woodville administrators and we'll take care of that shortly. One of the big issues that I've been working on is the park closure. The closure of Sequoia National Park cost the business people in Three Rivers a substantial amount of money because they had cancellations and also created some bad ill will with all the foreign visitors that we get during this time of the year. Most of our foreign visitors come in in October and we had people that were very disappointed because they planned these trips for a couple of years. But the saving grace is we were able to shuttle some of these people, redirect them to Bolch Park, which is the county park, and to Mountain Home State Forest. So not all was bad, but it was not good. The one thing we did accomplish this year, which I did not know until those meetings, is the Park Service has set aside some money to promote the Kings Canyon, Sequoia Kings Canyon National Park. So we will be working in collaboration with them to assure people that the park closure was something that was very unusual and tried to make the people, the European market feel more comfortable about planning their trips for next year. Also that week, I went to Stockton to the Fall Policy Council Meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Policy Council, which is made up of the eight Valley Transportation Agencies. And I'm glad to announce that I'm no longer the chairman of that group and that Rob Portis, the mayor of Madera, will be the new chairman. We had a Water Commission meeting on the 14th and the one thing we talked about was the abilities that we have in GIS and this new irrigated lands program that's coming up by the state of California, which is going to track groundwater nitrates. And I believe that we have the abilities now through environmental health and through RMA and through GIS that we can track these in a 3D format. And the only thing we need is the amount of money it takes to put it into a 3D format. So I have a meeting tomorrow with the representatives of the Cuiya and the Tulie and we're going to try to figure out how we can get monies to track the groundwater issues in Tulare County. Last week, we also had the Valley Supervisors Meeting and four of us were able to attend. And you always find out something when you sit through these meetings. The one thing we found out is about the leads that the state sends to counties about prospective companies wanting to locate in the county, so we'll be following up with that. The one thing I learned in the week before in Stockton, I forgot to mention, I sat next to a woman who is a right-of-way expert and I told her of our issue of the abandoned railroad line from Strathmore to Joe Vista and that line is still being assessed by the state of California, which I believe should be assessed by the county of Tulare since it's out of service. But the issue is, is when the lines go through cities, the cities zone areas and they'll zone that right-of-way as commercial or industrial, which really isn't industrial-commercial. But when they abandon that line, they want commercial-industrial prices for that right-of-way. So there's been a lot of studies about that and we are attempting to work with the board of supervisors. of Vehicleization to put the assessment authority back into the hands of the county. The other issue we have with that abandoned right-of-way, and especially the city of Porterville, is the maintenance of that right-of-way. So, when the weeds all grow up and it creates a fire hazard, it's very difficult for anyone to force compliance because we don't have a legal on the parcel that's in question. So, that's why it's important that it comes back to the assessor and the tax collector. Probably the happiest moment of my last two weeks. In fact, last Saturday, I was able to go duck hunting with my two sons. And that's all I have.
All right. On my turn, I just want to go over an event that's coming up in Tulare to benefit the Tulare Historical Society. They always put together a nice evening. It's called Taste Treats in Tulare. That's going to be held next Monday, beginning at six, and I believe it runs till eight PM. And again, all proceeds benefit the Tulare Historical Society, and all local restaurants participate. And it's a great evening, and lots of money is raised for a great foundation. And then also, just thought it was kind of convenient that we're celebrating Red Ribbon Week, and then also talking about marijuana in the same day. So, I'm proud to be drug-free, and hopefully this board will be promoting drug-free life here in Tulare County when we begin our session at one-thirty. And with that, we will now move on to the consent calendar, items six through twenty-one. Any board member wish to pull any items from the consent calendar for separate consideration or comment?
Nope.
Anyone from the public wish to have any item pulled? Okay. Seeing none, chair, approve. I have a motion by Supervisor Anis and a second by Supervisor Cox. Everyone, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Consent calendar is approved. We do have a nine-thirty timed item. That is item number five, a request from the Resource Management Agency to hold a public hearing regarding tentative subdivision map for tract number TM eight oh nine and preliminary site plan review number PSR zero-nine dash zero-zero-six. Mr. Spata, I could keep going because the period's not there quite yet, and I'm really paying attention to my words because I messed up a little earlier, but I'll let you continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Spata, RMA, plenty. There is no period. It just keeps going. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, County Council. The matter before you is proposed tentative map eight oh nine and PSR oh-nine dash oh-oh-six, sponsored by the applicant Eagle Crest Development Company. Essentially, this is a proposed tentative map and preliminary site plan for a division of twenty rural residential lots, ranging from one-point-one, four-point-nine lots, along with one well lot at one-point-three-three acres. In terms of location, the proposed project is northeast of the intersection of Reservation Road and Road two-nine-six, approximately three miles southeast of the city of Porterville, and approximately five miles west of the Tule Tribe Indian Reservation. It should be noted that the Planning Commission approved this tentative map and site plan unanimously without any opposition whatsoever. Essentially, the map before you, TM number eight oh nine, is the same as TM number seven-four-one, which expired in two thousand and six, and as such, the applicant moved ahead with reprocessing and refiling. Terms of general plan consistency, it is consistent with the general plan, specifically the foothill growth management plan, and it is the foothill mixed residential use, which allows a residential subdivision. It would be consistent with the subdivision ordinance if your board approved this project today because the subject property is outside an urban development boundary, and that's why it's here before you. Finally, it is consistent with the zoning, the PDFM, planned development foothill mobile home. And based on that, Chairman, we would recommend holding the public hearing and approving the staff recommendation, which is to approve the SEQA document, i.e. the addendum to the negative deck, to approve the tentative map and site plan, and to direct that the notice of determination be filed appropriately with the Tulare County Clerk. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Any questions from board members?
I have one question.
Supervisor Anis?
Mike? The only thing, when I was reading through this, the last, the last time the wells were tested was two thousand and six. Has there been any testing since then?
The testing will occur before the approval of the final map and the building permits. So, there will be additional testing required, sir.
That's the thing that concerns me most about these areas up there is water, not only the quality, but the quantity.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from board members? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if any member of the public would like to comment on this item. Please state your name and address for the records.
Fred Weber, sixteen-twenty West Minneal King, representing Dr. Schelnick, the owner. That expired due to a change in the ownership. The current owner, Dr. Schelnick, thought it actually had been recorded and done, but lack of communications through the previous owner, it didn't. Also, this subdivision is about ninety percent completed as far as construction. Roads are in, water lines are in, hydrants are in, wells are drilled, but they will be retested, so on and so forth. There's an eighty-three-thousand-gallon water tank sitting up on the side of the hill for the gravity flow, just due to the fact that it expired. It would probably have houses on it right now, otherwise. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Any questions? Okay. Supervisor Sheeda.
Have you done a test, water quality test on this well?
Not recently, but at the time back in oh-six, I believe it was, yes, it was. One was a little high on nitrates, but when they mixed it, it was okay because there's two wells.
Right.
But we'll have to go through all the water testing and everything again, make sure there's quantity and quality.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and/or action.
Mr. Chairman, this is a project that kind of represents other projects through the county that was brought up by the Water Commission, is the quality of the water that is being provided to these small subdivisions or residential lots that down the road, I think the county, the Board of Supervisors are going to have to take some action as to the permitting process for building on properties that have water that does not meet water quality standards. Or, we at least need to make that water quality test public to a prospective buyer. So, I think that's where the Water Commission wants to head, but I don't have the authority as one supervisor to give direction to our staff to do that. So, I think we should bring this up for discussion on, at a later date, on giving staff direction.
Okay.
I would certainly agree with that, Supervisor Sheeda, that not only quantity, but quality. Quality is the important thing. We've got so many Montgomery Ranch, Triple R Estates, those, all those have high nitrates, and also the lack of enough water. So, that's, that's why my concern was, so. But with that, I would move for approvals.
Second.
And we have a motion by Supervisor Anis, a second by Supervisor Sheeda. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. We are now going to move on to the untimed portion of today's meeting, and we will move on to item number twenty-two, which is a request from the Sheriff's Department to approve and adopt a resolution for a grant submission of a SB ten-twenty-two application. Captain Douglas.
Good morning, sir. Okay. Okay, well.
Here we go.
Ah, technology, huh?
Got to love it.
But you can't feel bad, Captain, because Hulieth is younger than me, and she couldn't even figure it out.
Good morning, city advisors, CAO, council. Keith Douglas, Captain with the Sheriff's Office. On behalf of Sheriff Mike Boudreaux, he does send his apologies for not presenting this in person this morning. He is attending the funeral in Dinuba, so he asked me to step in. Today before you, we are asking the board to adopt the resolution for the grant submission of SB ten-twenty-two. SB ten-twenty-two is a state funding program that focuses on the rehabilitation, reconstruction, or expansion of outdated, overcrowded, or flat-out condemned facilities. As you can see with this presentation by the slide, that's actually circa nineteen forty-one of the original Sequoia Field. Several of those buildings actually still exist, and we do use them currently. And as we go through this, this program presented a lot of different challenges, and I want to acknowledge some of the people that were involved in this. As you can see, this is a very brief overview of what the resources took to make this application possible. Mr. Spata and his team put together a SEQA program in absolute record time. Prior to this, my knowledge of SEQA was limited, and when I got briefed on it, I said, "Well, there's, we're not going to do this," and they really stepped up and were able to make this happen. Mr. Brett Fussell was able to go through title searches and property, dealing with old airport leases and stuff, to figure out whether or not the property was available. Mr. Newby also was able to do the due diligence program required for this program on this property. Clint Sims with County Council was able to review all our documents, along with any encumbrances or anything that we might have on there as well. Chief Probation Officer, Kristy Meyer, countless hours was dedicated to putting together statistics for us. Ms. Debbie Vaughn from the CAO's office spoke with her many a weekend, late night, working on this. She put together a statistical analysis that I had to go back to school for to understand, and she made it all work for us, and I can't express my gratitude to her. And last but not least, Mr. Michael Bowen, who's our Grant Rider Sheriff's Office, who endured meeting after meeting with personalities such as myself, who sometime have hard-headedness, and, but he was able to take all of this program information and put it together in a package that makes sense. What is SB ten-twenty-two? It's a five-hundred-dollar, excuse me, five-hundred-million-dollar lease revenue bonds from the state to construct jail facilities. It will be administered by the Board of Community Corrections to replace, renovate existing, compacted, outdated, and unsafe facilities. Our current jail system as it stands, Main Jail opened in nineteen sixty-two with a current capacity of two-hundred-and-seventy-two. Sequoia Field or North Facility Complex consists of the Men's Correctional Facility, opened in the nineteen forties as a Army Corps training base. Currently, three-hundred-and-sixty-six beds, which sixty-four of those are unavailable due to damage. Bob Wiley Detention Facility would open in nineteen eighty-six, currently houses, it's six-hundred-and-ninety beds. We're currently housing over seven-hundred inmates in that facility at this date. Pre-trial Detention Facility opened in two thousand and one and holds three-hundred-and-eighty-four, and we're currently bedding over four-hundred right now. Porterville, as you know, AB nine-hundred is scheduled, program's scheduled to open in two thousand and eighteen and is programmed for five-hundred-and-fourteen beds. The effects of AB nine-hundred, of what it has on our, on our jail system, we've received over sixty-five-hundred inmates as a result of AB one oh nine since October first of two thousand and eleven. As of date, it is over seventeen percent of our population with no sign of reduction. The state alignment will add approximately five-hundred-and-forty inmates by two thousand and sixteen, which will be over forty percent of our population. Our current capacities, our overall capacity is seventeen-hundred-twelve beds, of that sixteen-forty is usable. We are averaging sixteen-seventy-five to seventeen-hundred on a daily basis. The maximum life expectancy for the Men's Correctional Facility and Main Jail, our two oldest facilities, Men's Correctional Facility, we're estimating to end its life in two thousand and seventeen, Main Jail in two thousand and eighteen. Those dates just happen to correlate with SB ten-twenty-two for Men's Correctional Facility, a completion of mid-seventeen, and South County Facility in mid-eighteen. Between those two facilities, it's five-hundred-and-seventy-four beds. In our needs assessment that Ms. Vaughn put together, we have identified by the year two thousand and seventeen, we will need eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight additional beds, and by eighteen, we'll need an additional seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine beds above what we're planning. Our proposal for this facility, it'll be located in the Visalia area on approximately ten acres of the established land that we have. We're planning on three-hundred-and-eighty-eight beds. That number came about as the current facility is three-sixty-six. The Board of Community Corrections deems that up to twenty-five beds is not an increase in beds, which we did not want, because that would incur more staff. So, we came up with a number of three-eighty-eight. It actually played into our overall plan of the multi-man cells and multiple bedding. This facility is unique. It's got dedicated classrooms that are going to be specifically for evidence-based inmate programs, along with cognitive-based training. I recently attended a conference down in Ontario with the California State Sheriff's Association, and programming in the jails is one of the hot topics. And Los Angeles County put together a beautiful colorful flyer, all this wonderful thing. And you get through all the, all the glitter and glory, and our program's manager, Cheryl Saragino, wrote this program sixteen years ago. Their advantage is they're fifteen times our size and have a little more resources. Our limitation to our program has always been facility. Our current facility of MCF and DRC, we're using those barracks. We have limited resources, the classrooms. This project would eliminate that. We would also use the high reliability assessment tools such as Compass, which probation is currently doing for us, the SASE III, and Career Scope. Career Scope is something new to us for our population. It will assess the needs and vocational trades of people coming into our population. One of the very large aspects of this going on is the Daytime Reporting Center with onsite vocational train, trades building, including classrooms. Imagine a hundred-by-hundred building split into four sections with classrooms in the middle. That's where their instructional will be, and the actual workshops will be on the outsides of those in the shops area. We will be able to curtail those to what the inmate population needs. We're going to be able to reach out into the communities for what employable aspects there are for, as these people transition out, they can seek gain for employment. The other thing we're looking at building into this is a kitchen laundry warehouse services. Currently, the entire division is supported by the Bob Wiley, which is aging, and this would bring it up-to-date, modern, where we'd be able to shut that side down for additional cost savings. Here's an overview map currently of the way the complex sits. The red box indicates the approximation of ten acres where the proposed site is. You can see, right above the red box is kind of an A-shaped building set. That is the current MCF right now. So, as you can see, we don't touch the current, which means we don't have to vacate over three-hundred inmates while this construction project is going on. We can secure a fence line, and we can actually take care of the construction side before we move any bodies. Here's the functional design for what we're talking about, and just to touch base, we came up with the name of Sequoia Field Program Facility. If you're aware, the Sequoia Field airfield is on the national registry as a historical landmark, and we thought it appropriate to maintain some continuity there, so we incorporated that into our program name. As you can see, we're going to have administration, but we have a large section on daytime reporting in our vocational, and then the jail area itself. The jail is, again, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight beds, contained in two housing units in what we call multi-occupancy cells, four administrative cells, six multipurpose rooms, that's two in each, or excuse me, three in each housing unit. That's for instructional or faith-based, anybody coming in to do programs. Culinary arts kitchen, that is a vocational that we're going to be doing, a kitchen, medical triage, storage, and in-it-take release. And then a huge component of this, it has four dedicated classrooms that are not classification-specific, meaning we can intermix some of the population, which is something we cannot do now. A little bit more, the, we are competing against thirteen other medium-sized counties. Medium-sized counties are defined between populations of two-hundred-thousand to seven-hundred-thousand. The total grant award is one-hundred-and-sixty million. Maximum single award is forty million. That's what we're going for, and it's got a large focus on programming and transitional housing plans. And that concludes my presentation. I will entertain any questions the board might have.
Any questions from board members? Supervisor Cox?
Go back to the overhead shot with the A-frame building, right there.
Yes, sir.
I understand what we're doing. The proposal is to replace the old A-frame.
Yes, sir.
With the new facility.
Yes, sir.
On the bottom. I know we just...
Go back to the overhead shot with the A-frame building, right there.
Yes, sir.
I understand what we're doing. The proposal is to replace the old A-frame.
Yes, sir.
With the new facility.
Yes, sir.
On the bottom. I know we just, in the last few years, upgraded those facilities. Did we not upgrade them enough to where they'll outlive that two-thousand-and-seventeen life?
They are at their life expectancy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Worthley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Worthley. You touched on it, Keith. I was just curious about that historical designation. I remember at the time, as a county, we were opposed to that designation for fear that it might interfere with our ability to operate in this facility, particularly from a capital standpoint in terms of making improvements. Is there no problem with that at all?
No, and actually, I believe RMA is coming up with a site proposal for the airport, which covers that. The airport, as I recall, has been designated at one-hundred-and-seventeen acres, which is separate. And currently, there is a monument there, which we plan on maintaining, and we have contacted the National Historic Registry, and we're working with them to have a representation of what Sequoia Field was at the time, whether that be through diorama, or we might build some of our facade for the facility to look along the lines of what it looked like circa nineteen forty-one.
Very good, thanks.
Any other questions from board members? Go.
You know, I have a comment, you know, on page two of your slide presentation. Did a good job, by the way. You recognize the folks that are part of the team that put in a lot of time in. This is essentially the team that put together the AB nine hundred application that was successful in getting the sixty-million-dollar grant. So I just wanted to reiterate your comments about the level of effort that those folks put in. They've done a great job. They put a lot of time in outside of their regular work hours. RMA and being able to get the environmental document is really a testament to the excellent work that you're doing. Mike Bowen putting in a ton of time on his own, and Debbie Vaughn from my office, working a lot of nights, weekends, talking to Brett Fussell about parcelization with the next agenda item. Clint Sims and Robert Newby have all done a tremendous job. We have a lot to be proud of, and we're going to give this the best shot we can. And last but not least, Capital in adding in their expertise. You guys have all done a great job. We're going to give it our best shot, and the money, the match, that, you know, we used four million dollars in match for the AB nine hundred, a part of this item that wasn't mentioned by Keith is the recommendation to use two-point-two from our tier trust fund, which has sufficient funds in it to make that happen, I think. Again, this is just a team effort. This is the same team that went up to Sacramento with an application and didn't have one question asked of us. So anyway, great job, Keith, and great job to the team.
One more comment, Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
I think the fact that we have the matching funds gives us a leg up. I know that in the case of San Joaquin County, they were given an award, they gave it back to the state, and, well, twofold. Part of it was the matching contribution, but then also the operational cost. So that's the other thing, you know, building facilities, in this case, we're upgrading our existing facilities, so it's not, it doesn't, we're not looking at a major change, I would assume, in terms of operational cost. In many cases, when you're looking at building a brand-new facility, then that means brand-new staffing that goes with it. And for many counties, that's a major, obviously for all counties, that's a major hurdle. But in this case, where it's a replacement of an aging facility, we don't have that problem. So I guess I'm just somewhat crossing my fingers, hopeful that we'll be successful with this particular application, because many counties are not in a position like we are, both from the matching part of it and from a replacement part of it, to be able to do this kind of a project. So it probably would give us a leg up, I would think.
Supervisor Cox?
I guess one last question. Sounds like there's a lot of competition for these monies, although we have the dream team, and maybe the dream team is going to strike twice. My question would be, let's say we, you know, we're not successful this round, there's still cleanup work that needs to be done there, so I'm going to just assume, and we know what that word means, that there's some funding set aside out of our match to clean up some of the buildings that need to be cleaned up, regardless of whether we get this funding or not. Is still the intention to do the cleanup of the site regardless of whether or not we receive the funding?
Yeah, well, I could speak. We've actually been talking with Capital long before ten twenty-two came about, of what we were going to do with the facility and the complex itself. Several of the buildings, obviously, are not in use. We're looking at moving our property and evidence and crime lab out of there to vacate those buildings, and we've been working very closely.
Go ahead, you're doing just fine.
And that's, as far as the detention facility, we're going to keep it together, but we are working for Cap, with Capital to look at a overall, if this doesn't come to fruition, an overall global plan of where we're going to be in five, ten years.
My biggest concern was the buildings that are not being used, the buildings that cannot be used, because you mentioned the word condemned, there's some of them that are not usable. Just want to make sure that we put, make the effort to clean that up regardless of getting this funded or not, because it's needed to be cleaned up for quite some time.
And, you know, I just want to conclude by making a comment, just a, kind of a global comment, and really just commending our whole SB ten twenty-two team for their approach to this. You know, we can keep building jails, and I'm sure we're going to keep filling these beds, and as our population grows, we're going to need the additional space. But thank you for taking an approach to integrate vocational education and some level of training for these inmates, to equip them so that when they go back into the regular population, they won't be returned customers or clients of yours, so to speak. And I think it's a great philosophy, and I hope that the state recognizes that approach. And I know you have current efforts that work towards that, and part of the reason that our AB one oh-nine efforts have been so successful is because of these training programs and the team and collaboration that we have to help those that are incarcerated return to society and be somewhat productive. So I applaud your looking towards that direction and hope that we're successful in obtaining the funding.
Thank you, sir. And just to follow up on what Supervisor Worthley said, this project was unique as it's, there's three distinct folds, and I'll only take a moment of your time. There's what we call the preference points, needs assessment, and program narrative, and we've never experienced this. These preference points, there's four of them, and it's the adequacy of county contribution funds, real estate due diligence, CEQA compliance, and authorization from project documents. They are viewing those four points on their own merit, one, two, three, and four, and they're rating those, the top ones. If you have four, you get them all. So as we got into this and we realized with CEQA and Mr. Spot's group, I cannot emphasize the amount of work and effort that they had to do to get this. I've talked with my peers, and I've told them, "Oh, yeah, we got, we got our CEQA." "Well, when did you start?" "Well, back when we started the application." "No way, didn't happen, you're making it up." "No, they really did." And the same thing with the real estate due diligence. I know Mr. Newby constantly on the phone, "Okay, where's this line? Where are we going here? How much space do we need?" We're confident, we got all four points. Once that's done, then they're going to review our needs assessment, and Ms. Vaughn put together a needs assessment that will rivals anything I've read before. And then we have our program narrative, and between Cheryl, Mike Bowen, and all the other partners, we have a viable program, a sustainable program. And talking about staffing, what's, and the facility is a replacement facility. We're going to build a new facility, populate it, and then destroy the other facility. Or, you know, clean it all up. So, but what's unique about it is there is no county cost above for staffing. It is direct replacement for it. The only additional staffing will be programming staffing, and that funding will be coming from AB one oh-nine funds and also inmate welfare funds. So there is no net county cost on that. The building itself, we're anticipating, is going to be more efficient, so we're believing that general maintenance cost is going to be considerably lower than what it is now.
Yeah, let's stick with cleaning up, maybe, and not destroying.
Cleaning up's probably a good word.
That's a good word, yeah, like that. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. Any questions or comments from any of the partners or members of the public?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Nice presentation, thank you. We are now going to move on to item number twenty-three, which is a related agenda item. It's a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize the preparation of a tentative and final parcel map for Sequoia Field. Mr. Fussell.
Okay, I lost my presentation. It was supposed to be in the corner. Not there. Thank you. That doesn't help me find my presentation. I didn't put it on here, so I need some help. Good. Nothing in the upper right-hand corner.
Now you're locked out, Will.
Somebody moved it. All right. That'll do. Thank you very much. Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director of Public Works with the Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is a companion item to the AB ten twenty-two jail application, and that's to subdivide the three-hundred-and-twenty acres known as Sequoia Field into, I guess, what I would describe as manageable parcels. Did a little research on this property, and I discovered that the, although the federal government operated it airfield training base out of this back in the forties during World War II, the property has always been, since nineteen forty-one, when it was acquired from the city of Visalia, owned by the County of Tulare. So when the deed of transfer was done in, I believe, forty-seven, basically, all the federal government did was transferred the buildings and facilities on the site, and they actually accepted out in that this corner down here, it's about seventeen-and-a-half acres at the time, and the rest of the property had constraints on it for uses for airport purposes. The Board of Supervisors in nineteen seventy-six, nineteen seventy-seven had a, were very insightful and thought that maybe it's time now to speak with the FAA about getting a deed of release. And they submitted a request to the FAA, and they requested to be released from all airfield restrictions, reservations, et cetera, that was in the original agreement of transfer back in nineteen forty-seven. So at that point in time, about October, December of seventy-seven, all FAA restrictions were lifted off of this parcel, and I think that is what allows us to do what we're doing today without having any FAA restrictions per se, especially on the seventeen-acre parcel that we're dealing with here. To help further clean all that up, and also to deal with any bond covenants, et cetera, that is on this property, we thought it best to go ahead and do a parcel map. It also allows us to identify in what I call the airfield proper and to apply any FAA restrictions strictly to that parcel, and then identifies other properties that are available for the county to do with as it sees fit for the area. I found a provision in the Subdivision Map Act that says if you do, if all your parcels are twenty acres or larger in acreage gross in size, then you can use a parcel map rather than a subdivision map. And what that did, it allows us to do a five parcel parcel map instead of triggering a track map, if you will, by having more than four parcels. However, to do that, I need to kind of adjust some property boundaries around that we've been acknowledging for many years. The first parcel one is the parcel where the proposed grant application is. It is identified originally as seventeen-point-seven acres on our airport layout plan, which is where this comes from, and in order to qualify for the parcel map provisions, I'm suggesting that this white space right here, which is the extension of the original line, be bumped out to add at least two-point-three acres to this parcel in order to get it to the twenty-acre parcel size. And what I'm proposing to do would be to follow the existing airport-type improvements that are out there along the east line, if you will, north is to the left on the screen, and then this line here would then just go far enough north in order to get enough acreage to make this twenty acres. Parcel number two is what I call the airport proper, and it's always been identified on our ALP as one-hundred-and-seventeen-point-two acres, so I would propose that this line right here, the dash line below it, be pushed approximately twenty-five to thirty feet in the northeasterly direction in order to maintain that one-hundred-and-seventeen-point-two acres. That way, we shouldn't call into question any issues from the FAA. One of the things I did in reviewing this is I noticed that that line goes to this white area through here and actually clips a portion of the parking lot for the Bob Wiley and the pretrial facility. So I'm cutting that back so we don't have airport property being in the parking lot, and also, in order to meet the requirement for frontage on a public road, I'm truncating it at this point with about a hundred feet in order to provide road access to, I believe that's parcel five. Parcel three then becomes the Bob Wiley Detention Facility and the pretrial Detention Facility, but it's oddball shake because these are the ponds that are associated with the treatment plant, and I want to keep these on the same parcel. And so this is, I described it in my staff report as sort of a dumbbell-type parcel. Parcel four then becomes the pit that's left over. I'm not quite sure what the county's going to do with this in the future, but maybe there's some.
Recharge.
Regional groundwater recharge or something out there, we might be able to do with the existing pit. And then parcel five is the balance of the three-hundred-and-twenty acres that's left over, that's, as the county finds opportunities to use in the Sequoia Field area, this would become available. So with that, staff is recommending this morning that the board authorize the preparation of this map, following this conceptual map before you, authorize the chairman to sign the application, and any other documents that may be related to that application, and then, at the time the final map is prepared, authorize the chairman to sign the final map, and again, any other related documents to that final map. And with that, I would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Real quick, before we get to these questions, I did have a request from one of my colleagues that we pause at ten AM for a moment of silence for Junior Chambers, a longtime member of our Sheriff's Department who did pass away, and his services are taking place right now. So if we could all please observe a moment of silence, I would appreciate that. All right. Any questions from board members regarding this parcel map?
On the little triangle piece that hit the parking lot, really have to move that back the hundred feet to provide that access. That's just going to be done with the easement. Is it easier to do this way, other than, rather than recording an easement for access?
Well, the Subdivision Map Act talks about being able to use the parcel map process if you have access to a public road. So it will become an interpretation that we can work with the planning staff, and that if we can determine that an easement would be adequate and meet that definition so that we could do it, then we could square that off.
Gotcha. Good job, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from members of the public? And seeing no questions, the chair will entertain direction.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, a second by Supervisor Ashita. Please vote.
Thank you, Board.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
That looks like a congressional district map.
Yeah, you should apply, and once you retire, Brett, you should apply for the redistricting commission at the state. You'll do a great job.
It's not that clear.
Also, we do have a one-thirty timed item that we are going to be returning for. That is our marijuana study session, but we will be adjourning to closed session until that time. Counsel, we still have need, correct?
You do, Mr. Chairman. You need closed session. Have items A through E on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
All right. Thank you for attending this morning's session, and we look forward to seeing you in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned temporarily.
I think he was, somebody grabbed him, because he was, he was. No, it was Allen, yeah?
Allen was here, I just talked.
Did you say, did you? Did he know we were coming in? Did he know the time?
Okay. Kathy was in here ten minutes ago. I was in here two minutes ago. There they are.
Yeah, I got it signed.
I think I can look to you for that, too.
Okay. Okay.
It's still warm. It's hot off the press.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors. We do have an item to take up that was scheduled for 1:30. That is our marijuana study session. We have a request from the county administrative office to provide direction to staff as to which, if any, of four proposed options staff should pursue with regard to the modification of Tulare County ordinances related to medical marijuana or provide direction to modify one of the proposed options. With that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Debbie Vaughn.
Good afternoon. Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. So as you briefly outlined, the purpose of today is to request direction to staff as to which, if any, of the four proposed options staff should pursue with regard to modification of Tulare County ordinances related to medical marijuana or provide direction to modify one of the proposed options. So the four options that are listed are the same ones that are in your agenda items. And again, keep in mind that the choice is to modify those as well. So we're just going to start with a little brief background on some different areas. The first is some recent court decisions. At the time that the board took action on our last, our moratorium and our ban of collectives and dispensaries, the City of Riverside case had not yet been decided. That ruling was issued in, May, I believe? The Riverside case, yes, was issued in May, and there's copies of that ruling in your agenda item. But basically, it affirmed the right of cities and counties to regulate and ban medical marijuana operations within their jurisdictions. Another case that was, on April 29th, that was decided was the case of Tulare County versus Jeffrey Nunes. And the result of that is that the county's injunction, as well as its zoning ordinances, was upheld. Just a brief background of the legislative issues that your board has been addressing over the past couple of years. In 2012, if you'll recall, Assemblymember Amiano introduced Assembly Bill 2312. Your board sent actually two letters of opposition to that bill. The first one was the original version, and then after the bill was amended. And that bill essentially would have implemented a statewide system that took complete control away from local jurisdictions. In 2013, Amiano introduced another bill, Assembly Bill 473, that was conceptually very similar to 2312. That bill passed the assembly but did not make it out of the subcommittee in the Senate. Your board did not take action on that bill because it did not move forward. Also, in the last legislative session, Senator Steinberg introduced his Bill 439, which was quite a bit different than Amiano's bill. But your board did take a letter of opposition against that primarily based on concerns that it was intended to kind of circumvent the Riverside case ruling. There was concern with the language in there that it could be used to bypass that. And that concern was communicated to the author through both CSAC and through our letters, and the author did not choose to make changes. Then, as you're well aware, with four days left in the legislative session, Assemblymember Amiano, Senator Steinberg, and Leno did a gut and amend on Assembly Bill 604. And basically, what that bill did was it combined provisions of Amiano's Bill 473 with Steinberg's 439 bill. All of the associations, CSAC, RCRC, the League of Cities, as well as your board, took an emergency action to oppose this legislation. Again, the bill, that particular bill would have essentially legalized widespread cultivation, distribution, transportation, and sale of medical marijuana and provided the state with the control over those activities. That bill did not move forward in the last four sessions. On the very last day of the session, the same authors proposed another gut and amend on the Senate side that was also unsuccessful, and that bill was the same bill as AB 604. So the point in summarizing the legislation is to kind of make the point that we anticipate that in January there will be, in the new legislative session, new medical marijuana regulations proposed. On, the other thing that happened recently is that James Cole, who's Deputy Attorney General with the U.S. Department of Justice, issued a memorandum entitled Guidance Regarding Marijuana Enforcement. And that was on August 29th. The memo was primarily interpreted as a response to the state of Colorado and the state of Washington's legalization to, of medical marijuana on a broader scale than we'd seen before. The eight items that are listed in your PowerPoint are the guidance that the U.S. Attorney is using in its decision-making as to whether or not to prosecute on medical marijuana cases. So the first one is distribution to minors, if there's revenue going to criminal activities, diversion from a state that has legalized to other states that have not, state, you know, if you're, if it's being utilized as a cover for other illegal drugs or illegal activity in order to prevent violence or the use of firearms in the cultivation and distribution. And that is something that we are familiar with in Tulare County. To prevent driving under the influence or other public health consequences, to prevent all cultivation on public lands and any environmental or other damages that are associated with that, and then just preventing its possession or use on federal property. So those were the general guidelines that they set out. But I think it's important to note that the, that the U.S. Attorney also stated very clearly that the expectation was that states would implement appropriate regulatory guidelines and they would fund them appropriately to ensure that these things did not occur. So the memo is a guideline saying, you know, these are under the conditions that we're going to focus, but also with a very clear expectation that appropriate measures would be taken to make sure that none of these things occurred and that they would be funded as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. You're going to hear two presentations today. One from the Resource Management Agency, which has been heavily involved in our code enforcement, and the other from the sheriff's department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Mike Spada, RMA Planning. This afternoon, RMA will be giving its part of the presentation relating to the America Medical Marijuana Code Enforcement Program in terms of a number of parts. First, we will walk you through the regulatory requirements that the county has with regard to medical marijuana enforcement. Then we will give you a fairly detailed, but brief, but fairly detailed statistical review of the performance of RMA's program over the last year and a half. And then we will suggest, or before I suggest improvements to the process, I'll walk you through the permit process or the procedural process, then suggest some improvements to the process and the next steps. All right. Turning to the current medical marijuana individual general guidelines and requirements. Number one, there must be a recommendation from a doctor. Two, smoking, ingesting, or consuming must occur within or on the premises of a private residence outside of public view. Three, smoke or smell shall not invade other properties or areas of public domain. Next, cultivation is limited to one recommendation per structure. Next, no employees or independent contractors may be used for cultivation. In addition, possession of more than one recommendation constitutes a collective slash cooperative in the corresponding regulations. Next, the cultivation or distribution of medical marijuana within the county shall at all times occur within a secure, locked, and fully enclosed main structure, including a ceiling, roof, or top. Currently, there is a moratorium prohibiting or stopping the establishment of or the expansion of existing new medical marijuana collectives, cooperatives, and dispensaries. To refresh your memory, the previous regulations prior to the moratorium being imposed by your board can be summarized as follows. First, in terms of zoning, there were a number of zones in which the cultivation was allowed. One, C2 or general commercial, C3 service commercial, M1 light manufacturing, or M2 heavy manufacturing. The property lines had to be a minimum of 1,000 feet from sensitive areas or other collectives or cooperatives. Cultivation must have occurred within a secure, locked, and fully enclosed structure. There must be an alarm system. All cultivated marijuana must be kept secure in structures with additional security measures. The structure shall restrict smells related to medical marijuana. The interior and exterior, as well as the parking area, must have been well lit. Windows and roof hatches must have been secured with bars. No cultivation or dried marijuana, no cultivated or dried marijuana was allowed to be visible from public areas or neighboring properties. Distribution to two or more qualified patients was unlawful unless distribution is from a collective or cooperative. And again, no employees or independent contractors or other persons were allowed to be used in the cultivation process. All right. It's a little difficult to see. I'll just walk you briefly through our regulatory enforcement process on the administrative side with regard to medical marijuana. The first step is a 10-day notice of violation. As a result of an amendment to the ordinance by your board, we eliminated what was known as the 10-day courtesy notice in the sense that we went right to the 10-day notice. So once the 10-day notice of violation has been sent, the investigation process follows. And if an entry is needed for a warrant, then county council, working with our code enforcement staff, Mike Grove in particular, would obtain a warrant. Then the investigation would be developed to determine just the nature and extent of the violations. There would be a mailing of the notice of violation to the property owner, the site address, the lien holder, and the U.S. Attorney. Now, if during this process it was abated, then the process would be completed. If it was not abated, then the next step would be to proceed to what is known as the 30-day notice, which in essence is a notice of violation or to correct or to show cause and notice of assessment of civil fines and penalties. The next slide represents the 30-day notice. In other words, if there was a failure to comply with the 10-day notice, then the code enforcement officer would reaffirm the violations, identify all the violations, establish the administrative hearing date, attach the fines and penalty schedule, mail it to the property owner, site address, and the lien holder, as well as the U.S. Attorney General. And then approximately one or two days before the administrative hearing, the code enforcement officer would verify whether the violations are still in existence. And if that was so, then the matter would proceed to the administrative hearing. All right. The results of the regulatory process and the notification process had developed a number of very detailed statistics. For last fiscal year, 2012, 2013, there were a number of very successful statistics that were garnered by RMA. For example, there were completed files or cases on 358 sites. There are 38, 30 still outstanding with 94% abatement. 352 10-day letters of violation were sent. 70 30-day notice of violations were sent. There were 256 closure of violation letters. 328 closed files. Eight administrative hearings where 100% of findings were found in favor of Tulare County. All other cases were abated prior to the hearing date. Fifteen summary of abatement warrants were obtained. Five criminal prosecutions were filed. One inspection warrant. One criminal investigation was generated. The number of county sheriff personnel varied and was determined by the size of the site. Then finally, the approximate estimate is that 37, over 37,000 medical marijuana plants were abated by RMA. In terms of giving you a glimpse into the overall performance of the program, since it was initiated back in January 30, 2012, to August 8th, which goes beyond the fiscal year, 525 files were completed, 52 are outstanding with 84% abatement. And I'm told that we have over 90% as we, as we discuss the matter today. 430 10-day letters were filed. 99 30-day letters were sent. 295 closure of violation letters have been developed. 473 closed files are now affected. There have been 12 administrative hearings, again, 100% finding in favor of Tulare County. All other MMJ cases were abated prior to the hearing date. 26 abatement warrants were obtained from the court. 23 were served. There were six criminal prosecutions, one inspection warrant, one criminal investigation. One preliminary injunction was obtained. And again, the sheriff personnel varied and was determined by the size of the site. In sum, approximately 55,000 medical marijuana plants were abated by RMA. Okay, before I turn it over to the representative from the sheriff, I just wanted to say that in terms of trying to be proactive with regard to this program, RMA will be bringing to you, most likely in December, a proposed modification or amendment to our ordinance code dealing with the administrative hearing process. Right now, in our administrative hearing process, it's an automatic appeal, automatic appeal to the administrative hearing board if the case is not abated within the 30-day period. After doing research, extensive research, and in consultation with county council, it was ascertained that a great many counties, including the counties that neighbor us here in the South Central Valley, do not have an automatic appeal provision. Instead, they have the provision whereby the aggrieved party, the party who sent the notice, has to affirmably request the appeal. Usually, it's 10 days. If that appeal is not requested in a timely manner, then the notice becomes the order and decision of Tulare County. And the county then could go straight to enforcement. I say that because working in conjunction with county council has just been terrific in the sense that we have found a path to a pretty speedy and effective recovery of administrative fines by bringing them to small claims court. And our revenue that was booked last fiscal year exceeded a little over 25,000. And this year, after the first quarter, it's over $20,000. So we are on a path of really garnering successfully administrative fines and penalties through the code enforcement process. We believe that if we streamline the administrative process, that will shorten the time by which, number one, cases are closed, cases are abated, and the speed with which we actually get to court will be much faster, which means the recovery process will be faster. The reason why I say that is many reasons. One, it's the enforcement aspect of this program. But number two, as we've indicated, what we're trying to do in general code enforcement, as well as medical marijuana enforcement, is try to be as self-recoverable or self- as well as medical marijuana enforcement, is try to be as self-recoverable or self-sustainable as we can. And we are on that path. Last year, we booked 25. We've estimated for this year 50, and we keep going up hopefully so that the program can be self-sustainable. We can add resources so that we can really maximize, if you will, the value of our enforcement program. What I wanted to say is that, finally, in terms of needs, we believe we have an appropriate funding allocation right now, which is $100,000 in order to support the program. If we reach 50, we're halfway there towards being sustainable, and we think that that is a good thing. I wanted to also acknowledge and thank and compliment our medical marijuana code enforcement team, which consists of Mike Grove, who is a retired California Highway Patrol Officer, and also someone who's new to our Tulare County RMA family, Marie Mendoza, who is a medical marijuana part-time code enforcement officer, and she's a recent graduate of our police academy here in Tulare County. So, we have a very good medical marijuana code enforcement team. However, the value of our enforcement program is maximized because we blended that with our general code enforcement team. And led by our building official, Dennis Lehman, assisted by building and zoning inspector Hector Ramos, we can see the energy that develops between general code enforcement and medical marijuana code enforcement, so that way of a continuous circular degree of energy within that team to try to get the cases out and resolved as quickly as possible. So, we believe that with the funding support by your board, the CAO, and by the recovery efforts generated by county council, we have a solid program right now. And we will evaluate it at mid-year. We'll evaluate for next fiscal year, but at the present time, we believe we're reasonably sufficient and adequate with what we need to do. So, with that, I wanted to thank again our code enforcement team, thank your board, county council, and the CAO for what we believe is a reasonably successful program at this time. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mike.
Good afternoon. Lieutenant Tom Sigley, Tulare County Sheriff's Department Narcotics Division.
Pull the microphone up a little bit.
How's that? Better? I'm currently in charge of the Sheriff's Narcotics Division, which includes the STEP unit, which is the Sheriff's Tactical Enforcement Personnel, who are in charge of marijuana investigations. These first couple slides you've all have seen before. You've either come out, flown over. I just wanted to give you a recap of what we're dealing with. These were all taken this year. It's just the various marijuana grows that are being claimed as medical. These are some of the plants that we've taken this year on several of the search warrants that we have served on the marijuana grows. Some of these stats might not match what you have in your packet, because what I tried to do was do a apple for apple, so I did the same timeframe last year, which was 10/21 of 12 through 10/21 this year from January. You can see the... Can I read that from here? As you can see, this year, we've hit 140 marijuana grow sites, 124 of those on private land, 16 on public lands. We've eradicated 233,772 plants, which is about 35,000 more than we were at this time last year. On private land, which is most of the private land is the valley floor grows, we've eradicated 119,770 plants. And on public lands, national forests, BLM lands, we've eradicated 114,002 plants. The big number is the bulk processed, and what the bulk processed is, is that marijuana is ready to go. It's packaged, it's processed, it's ready to use. Currently, we're at 5,008 pounds. Number of arrests, 128 arrests so far this year. And if you look at the ones from last year, you'll see 230. We tried to change tactics. When we met, we actually met with the DA's office last year, if you recall, with District Attorney Phil Klein, and we tried to change our focus to a little more long-term investigations and getting into the financials of some of these operations, and that's kind of the direction we went. We've currently seized 256 weapons out of these grows, whether they be assault rifles, pistols, versus the 129 we found last year. And again, this next number on the assets seized, you'll see the difference between this year and last year. And that kind of goes back to doing the long-term investigations. Following the financial numbers, following the numbers from where this stuff's being sold. This next slide, we pulled the violent crimes and other crimes associated with marijuana grow locations. As you'll see, this year, and the reason it runs February 12 through February 13, and February 13 through now, is when we first went back and started gathering these statistics, I think it was right before the DC trip, we started pulling all the stats, and that's where we ended. We stopped at February of 2013, so we picked it up again in February of 13 through current. But as you'll see, we've had, from February of 12 to 13, 13 assaults with deadly weapons, two assaults on police officers, shooting in inhabited dwellings, three homicides in 2012. And as you'll see, we've had three so far in 2013. Three attempted homicides in 12. A kidnapping, six robberies, the burglaries, 17 home invasions. These are all tied with the medical marijuana grow sites. And actually, going back to this one assault on a peace officer, we actually was on a compliance check with Mike Grove when that occurred. It was strictly a civil process, and the guy went off on the officers, and we ended up having to send five to six units from Exeter PD, Farmersville PD, before they finally got this guy contained. This is just one of the trends we're seeing. They're moving their... This is how it's turning to be a year-round operation. This was at the very beginning of the season. This grow was located inside a greenhouse. See the barrage of weapons that they had? We also seized approximately 400-pound, one-pound bags of packaged marijuana, as well as $155,000 in cash. And we also had the receipts from where they had taken it to various dispensaries and sold it. This is just some other overflight photos. They're hard to see, but all the green you see with the black arrows pointing, that is all marijuana. And the other, the picture on the right is from the ground level. Just go over some of the other numbers I have. Currently, on referral, whether referrals come in through our sheriff's tip now, patrol, citizens call into the office. Currently on record right now, we have about 452 grow locations identified in the county. Breaking them down by location, 168 in the Porterville area, 75 in the Pixley area, 95 in the Arosi area, 110 in the headquarters area, which, I mean, those numbers also account for some of the ones we've already served search warrants on. But going back, we've currently served 54 marijuana search warrants, the STEP team has. 12 civil abatement warrants we've served for code compliance. But I also wanted to touch base on, STEP doesn't just do marijuana. They're our primary SWAT team, entry team, so we're tasked with doing search warrants for everybody in the department. So, along with the 54 marijuana search warrants, we've served 66 narcotics search warrants and 20 other search warrants for violent crimes, property detectives, gangs, et cetera. So, I mean, it's been a very proactive and busy year. I think this county task force that we've put together has been invaluable with code compliance, county council, the district attorney's office. Sean's here. He's been one of the most aggressive attorneys we've, district attorneys we've had assigned to us. So, overall, for the number of personnel we have, which is eight, I mean, we're doing, I think we're doing very well. So...
Okay. Are there any questions from board members? Superintendent Cox?
Ken, before we start, you know, listening to any other public testimony, I noticed I'm looking at the statistical sheet, I see three homicides. Would you give me a brief description, not too descriptive, of those three homicides, where they occurred?
I don't have that.
Don't have that?
I don't, well, I don't have the information on the particular case, no.
Know where they happened?
Not off the top of my head, I don't. That doesn't come to us. That goes to violent crimes. Another lieutenant and another unit handle that. So, I don't have any information as far as the circumstances of it.
And the next slide shows a picture. There's a picture of a table or a floor full of guns. Is that typical of...
Are you looking at the weapons?
I see the indoor greenhouse, and the weapon seized right next to it. Are those weapons from just that one?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes. And that's typical. We find, if we don't find it in the house at the grow site, we find it in the grow where there's usually a tent that somebody's taking care of the marijuana site. We located one in Arosi about a month ago that actually had a guard tower, about 20 feet there. But that's common for what we find at these outdoor grows. If it's not the weapons, like the one in Porterville, their makeshift security is they plug in an extension cord, hooked it to a wire, ran a wire around the grow, and that was their hot wire, which was 110 volts. So, it's those kind of issues we're dealing with.
Any other questions from board members? One question I'll just ask in general. I know this is a very innovative program with a lot of different aspects to it. Do you feel there are any tools that you do not currently have that would help you in protecting our communities and keeping them safe?
You know, honestly, I mean, we're thankful for the boost you gave us a couple years ago as far as the personnel, but that's what it comes down to. I mean, the number of personnel we have, we can only do so much. So, but as far as equipment and tools, I think we're pretty well geared up for it. It just comes down to manpower.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, at this time, I do have a couple of requests to make a public comment. Public comments can and will be limited to three minutes per speaker. And at my discretion, we can also limit the entire totality of public comment in general. But I do have two forms here in front of me. One is from Elizabeth Tapia from the Tevison Community Services District. Elizabeth, would you like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record as well. You can use either microphone. They both work.
My name's Elizabeth Tapia, and I'm from the Tevison Community Service District. It is in Pixley, California, 12934 Avenue 80. Basically, Pixley, it's comprised of 105 connections, serving 132 units. The district serves approximately 400 residents. Tevison has two groundwaterers. And one of the wells, it has been out of service since 2007, when the well casing collapsed. So, we've been only with, served by one well. Last year, on August 4th, the district called the OES to report an outage because the north well was pumping in air intermittently. The community was left waterless until Sunday, which is when we received donated water. But these people still didn't have water for drinking, cooking, bathing, or other hygienic purposes until the pump was fixed until August 8th. The company we hired to fix extended the pump 40 feet. That solution was and is short-term, depending on how long the water tables allow it to be. To preserve this resource for current customers, the district enacted a moratorium on January 9th, 2013, to discontinue new water connections. Tevison is a disadvantaged community that already has high water rates of $55 for 15,000 gallons of water per unit. There are insufficient reserves to cover the cost of future repairs or drilling a new well. We believe that the residents deserve to have safe drinking water at all times, and the district has applied for grants multiple times, but we've been told that the approval process could take years. Since the incident of the summer of 2012, our pump has been pumping 300 gallons of water per minute, turning on and off every five minutes. This July, our pump meter began to show that it was pumping 100 gallons per minute, and it was running the entire day. This alarmed the district, which prompted to come up with a way to prevent another water emergency and to conserve as much of this resource as possible. This is why we came up with the ordinance you have, and its purpose is to promote the safety and general welfare of the residents of our district by discouraging the growth of marijuana farms that utilize as much as 200,000 gallons of water a month. Our intent was never to criminalize having marijuana farms, but to simply protect the residents from enduring another water catastrophe. All we're asking is cooperation with our district by sharing information from code enforcement agency that lets the district know whether the addresses we forward to the department were in fact illegally growing marijuana, so that we may proceed by sending the properties a letter letting them know that they have a certain amount of days to correct the violation.
Okay. Did you finish, Ms. Tapia?
Uh, no.
Okay. Keep going. We'll give you a little bit more time if you need it.
We're not law enforcement, and we do not feel we can claim something is illegal when our own state allows it and the federal government calls it illegal. This is why we are relying on code enforcement agency to investigate it and to let us know whether the property is in fact growing illegal marijuana. We have mailed out letters to district customers advising them of this ordinance and to, and on separate occasions, asking them to share their concerns regarding this ordinance via our monthly meetings held on the second Wednesday of every month. We would like to continue coming to workshops and find out what we can do more about this because this is becoming a real problem. Based on the ones we reported from last year and this year, the marijuana problem has doubled, so we're really concerned about our water issue.
Okay. Mrs. Tapia, I'd like you to visit with Lieutenant Sigley, as well as Mr. Grove, and get the information that you need for proper contact. So, thank you for coming. I also have requests to speak today from Jeff Nunes. Jeff, if you would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Nunes. I'm an advocate for cannabis patient rights and a court-appointed cannabis expert witness for Tulare and surrounding counties. I've witnessed the struggle of both sides of this issue. Turning legal patients into criminals is getting us nowhere as a whole. Laws for cannabis patients are getting stronger than ever. Almost 20 states have medical marijuana programs now. We have two that are full on legalization. Courts are overburdened with medical marijuana cases due to the county's resistance of medical marijuana laws voted in by the people for the people. Superior Court rulings, Attorney General guidelines of non-diversion, taxation, and implementation of Senate Bill 420. Suffering citizens of your districts are relying on you, are depending on you for your vote for safe access for their cannabis therapy. Limiting garden size will only make more sites to enforce. A garden of 99 may help 16 patients. For 6,000 patients, we would need 36,000 plants. 99 plants per garden, that would be 363 gardens that needed to be enforced. There needs to be a committee created of doctors, patients, farmers, RMA, narcotic agents, and STEP teams. Organizations want to work with our county to create standards of operation for these new types of industries that are emerging in our community. We all want the same thing. We want harmony. The only way to achieve this is by working together. The only way to achieve this is by working together to structure the best system possible to help patients obtain their medication as legal as possible, at the same time aiding our county's vital programs through taxing or tagging of these plants. It's a win-win situation. I will end with a quote from JFK. "My fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." I'm here to help if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do have one question for him.
Go ahead.
One of your statements was that ninety-nine plants takes care of the needs of sixteen patients.
May, yes.
Not for a year?
Uh, depends, if you grow them hydroponically under one light, you may get a pound. If you have ninety-nine outdoor plants that produce a pound each, we may be able to produce enough that we can help more than sixteen, but as of right now, with the numbers at hand, it's, with this process, it'll create more individual sites and more problems for our code enforcement and our RMA to address. So if we had one site that can bottleneck processing facility of sorts, that can have regulations that these farms that it is connected to, we can work together that creates a structure that can be beneficial to both parties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this afternoon? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dawn Jobe and I live in Porterville, California. I'm speaking today on behalf of the medical cannabis patients. We have the majority and the most growing population in the cannabis community right now are the elderly. They are unable to grow their own plants, they rely on more able-bodied patients to help them to, a lot of them are bedridden and some of them are dying with cancer. A lot of our elderly are tired of going to the doctor and seeing that every time they come back, they have more and more prescription bottles because they have to be given another prescription to help with some of their others. So they've realized that cannabis is used and helpful for a variety of ailments, and it's not just smoked. There's a variety of ways patients use it nowadays, they make topical rubs, they ingest it, and that's how most of our severely ill patients prefer to use it. Of course, there's always smoking, but the amount of medication that's required to produce these things are so much that the limitations that you are imposing upon patients practically prevents them from providing themselves with the medication they need, let alone being able to help out fellow patients as our SB four twenty and Prop two fifteen allow. It clearly states in two fifteen, the patients can collectively work together to provide medicine with and for each other to be able to do it in a safe access and with compassion. That's what the California Compassionate Act was for, created for patients who need another alternative. Myself, I can't take pharmaceuticals, it damaged my liver. So I, I rely on this daily and able to, to function as many other people in California do. The city and the counties need to come together, the state, the people have spoke when they voted two fifteen into law. I see the pictures of the guns and all of that. Those are not medical marijuana gardens, those are illegal gardens. And we are highly offended as patients when we read that it's another illegal medical marijuana garden. It's not medical marijuana, that's the problem that existed way before two fifteen was ever passed. Those people are who are profiting off of the restrictions you are placing on us. The harder you make it for a patient to get access to their medication safely and securely, where it's clean and they know that it's good for them and hasn't been sprayed with pesticides, they're forced to become illegal criminals and go to the black market to get dirty medication and hope that they can find someone that's willing to take the chance to go to jail because they're forced by our elected officials who are not abiding by the state law. The people asked you to show compassion, I know many of you have relatives who have cancer, who have had cancer, who are in fact medical marijuana patients and would not be here without it. And you need to remember that it could be your mother, it could be your grandma, maybe it won't cure their cancer, but maybe it'll ease their suffering. There's fibromyalgia, there's people who can't get out of bed in their morning, there's all kinds of diabetes it's helping. It helps with a variety of things and people need this as their alternative medicine. We see pharmaceutical medications being yanked off the shelf, it's the highest cause of death, now it's being used for the biggest illegal drug market. We want our safe medicine.
Please wrap it up, thank you very much.
I appreciate your time and I hope you will really consider patients' rights when you are deciding ordinances. And I agree with the other gentleman that we would like to work together, I've worked with the city of Porterville and I would like to work with you to help you make sure the ordinances you create support and protect the rights of the patients.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak this morning or this afternoon? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Roger Southfield, four twenty-six Channing Way, Exeter, California, Tulare County. I'm here today with a proposal of an answer to all of our problems. I also need medical marijuana, I was paralyzed from a waist down, and it's a simple medication that shouldn't have the price that it has. I can grow for fifty cents a pound. Why is it that dispensaries or collectives are selling it for fifty dollars an eighth? That's where the crime lies. I'm proposing before the city council of cities here in our Tulare County of coming up with an agency that we form ourselves and be held accountable for ourselves by starting a coalition. And within the coalition, it's going to be informed by an open door policy that includes the county and the city on the decision-making with a barcode system, that anybody that grows in this county has to get a barcode that tracks the medication through the beginning of the barcode handed out to the person that's actually consuming it, to keep the costs down for we actually can use it the way it was intended to do and take the crime out of it by taking the cost out of it. Thank you very much, and I hope we could come again and present my program again before the board of supervisors to possibly look at it more extensive to be able to get an answer to the problem we have in our county.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak this morning or this afternoon?
My name is Jeff Four, I'm from city of Porterville. What you guys don't understand and what the officers haven't told you is our federal government has their own medical marijuana program. They've been giving out medical marijuana to patients since the early seventies, three hundred joints per month shipped by Federal Express to the last surviving four patients to this day. We have to have a program available for people in this area that's a safe access so they can get their medication. It's not a matter of we don't agree with it or a few folks don't agree with what they're doing, it's their right. It's their right and their privilege from what their doctor has given them permission to use as an alternative for their illness. Some of the people I know have been harassed and illegally searched by the officers that you are supporting over here. I've witnessed it, I've been involved in it, I've watched it happen. We have a way to work around this, to control the gang, the gang involvement, to control the cartel involvement, to control the illegal growth of marijuana in this town. Problem is, you guys need to step up and start looking towards the patients' rights and not trying to protect somebody that's profiting off the war on drugs and the prohibition on marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this morning or this afternoon?
Yeah, my name is Jim Shropshire from Lindsay, two, two, one, two, eight, Road two sixty, I'm east of town, along the foothills. Yeah, my concern is we have an awful lot of the residents, our neighbors would drive to work every morning and you can count them on either side of the street. You know, we're concerned about our families, our well-being, the safety, the activities. We've talked about the ability that if these legal grow sites are actually taking out permits and registering, if it's possible for the public to be able to access these sites by address and have the ability to see if in fact they have a permit to grow, so that we're aware of exactly if these grow sites or at least have, they have taken out permits, not to say that they're still operating legally, but and know where these sites are confirmed, and if there are no permits available, you know, as citizens, you know, we want to, for myself, we don't, I have no problem with medical marijuana, but I do have a problem with all these grow sites and all the crime that goes along with it because that's the welfare and, and protection of our families, our kids, what we can do out in our countryside, and it's, it's just everywhere. I've got, my mom's got one next to her house, and we live out in the country and out in, in, in wide open spaces, but it's, it's, uh, it's just everywhere and it's kind of difficult to address them when they're sometimes your next-door neighbors. And so I would like to have a system where we would have access to, to that kind of information and so that at least we know, you know, what we're dealing with, or even if we need to call law enforcement if, if, if it's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this afternoon? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment period and I'm going to bring it back to the board for discussion, further questions and direction. Mr. Anis, you leaning into that microphone?
No, I don't need to lean into it, but I think people know how I feel on this situation, and I probably got all over my fifth district out there, and we don't allow these illegal grow sites in my district. I make sure of that, I personally go out and look at these sites and then I turn it over to Mr. Groves, Mr. Sigley, whoever I think needs to go there. But the problem is the illegal sites. We're not saying that, I'm not against people smoking marijuana for a medical purpose, but it's the ninety-nine percent that do it illegally, and those are the ones that we're after. And so, you know, I have no, I have no zero, I have zero tolerance for people that grow this stuff illegally, and I show it every day in, in my district, so that's all I have to say.
Roger Cox?
Sure, this being a work session, I wonder if we might be able to have Debbie facilitate some type of a, a round table discussion here. We have several, you know, options in front of us, one of them, the option was permanently extend the moratorium that it goes on to talk about options of outdoor grow sites, plant limitations, setback requirements, out of view of public access. I know a lot of those things are already covered, or some of them are covered on ordinance, but I, I wonder if we ought to go through those specific items and see what the, you know, what the desire of the board to do is here. If we want to further define, further restrict, expand, you know, I, I think it's important that we look at our current ordinance and then have a discussion here so we can give staff direction about where we want them to go in the future with this. One of the things we didn't talk about or didn't hear was the mobile dispensaries, I didn't hear anything said about that. I'd like to have a discussion about that, so if we can start there. Shouldn't take too long, but I, I appreciate the board's indulgence if we could actually have this discussion so we can give them clear direction about where to go.
So I want to make sure I understand, you just want to go through each of the options and talk about what those constitute?
Well, I'm also looking at the current general guidelines that was on slide nine. These are things that we, we hashed out, I think, you know, a few years ago, talking about the appropriate zones. Is this still where we want this to be? I think a, a big part of our problem is most of these illegal grows are happening out in agricultural areas where it is not, clearly not in compliance with our zoning ordinance. So, you know, for me, if we can go at this like a checklist and then start talking about where, if we wanted to better define this or more clearly define, I think that's where we ought to go. I mean, as we look at the zones, do we want to expand it to the agricultural zones?
And there are a couple other points that I know, some that I've heard code enforcement say with regard to some of these, like for example, when you're talking about individual sites, if we want to, you know, if we want to maintain those as an indoor grow site only, we make some reference, and that's on this slide, to it having to be in a structure that's part of the primary, primary structure, but we might want to further clarify what that means because I think out in the field, there's some confusion as to that. One of the other issues that came up is whether or not we should involve a residency requirement and whether or not you want to address the issue in terms of plant limits or square footage limits. So those might be other things to consider when you go through this list.
One, one of the things I'd like to focus on, Mr. Nunes actually talked about the, you know, number, ninety-nine plants being able to, to supply enough medical marijuana for up to sixteen patients, that's six and an eighth plants about per year. So I, I wonder if we want to, you know, focus some discussion around the number of plants or how many square feet. I know several jurisdictions have, have included a number of square feet allowable for grows in their jurisdiction, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I address that question? The ninety-nine plant per person number is drawn from an appellate criminal case, there is nothing in statutory law that addresses that. I have heard vastly different numbers in terms of the amount of marijuana needed to medicinally supply a patient in a year. And the, the numbers that I have heard, and perhaps Lieutenant Sigley could help speak to this as well because I've heard them in various fora, is four is an extremely generous amount for someone who is using it for medicinal purposes. I mean, I, I've actually heard law enforcement officers say, and I have no reason to think they're not being truthful, that you could be under the influence of marijuana twenty-four, seven for a year with four plants, is that?
What we did is.
And, and real quick, I just want to make sure that there's a clear distinction that, you know, this is not Doctor Sigley, it's Lieutenant Sigley. So, you know, if it's for medicinal purposes, there's definitely a difference between medicinal versus what law enforcement believes, but I just want to make sure that's.
I, I think Lieutenant Sigley can tell you how they sort of work backward to the number of plants.
Correct, and where we get the ninety-nine from is everybody's under the misconception that if you have under a hundred, DEA will come and take it, which, it's not written anywhere, I don't know where that got started. But what we started doing is we weighed some of the marijuana cigarettes that we've seized, and they weighed out to almost a gram. Some of them are a little under a gram. You take ninety-nine plants and as Mr. Nunes said, you can get about a pound, a pound but a plant, there's four hundred and fifty-four grams to a pound. Multiply that times ninety-nine and it comes out to like forty-four thousand some odd grams. So if you convert that to marijuana cigarettes, you're going to have to smoke like three hundred and twenty-three of them a day for three hundred and sixty-five days to use all that marijuana. And you, you're really not going to function under that, under the influence of that much marijuana. And I know they're saying that you can throw it in your bathtub, rub it on your head, whatever, some do with it that makes you feel better. But the fact of the matter is, and he proved the point when he came up here and spoke, is ninety-nine plants, if it can supply up to sixteen people, then the doctors have no business giving ninety-nine plants per person because they know they're not going to use it. And there is no medical research that's been done about how much marijuana it takes per patient. One may be different than the other, so if that answers your.
And, and counsel, just, just to clarify it real quick, as, as a county elected, are we charged with? are we charged with, uh, following and enforcing just state law? Or do we have federal law to enforce as well? I was just curious.
Your, your oath requires you to uphold both state and federal law. This puts you in...
And marijuana is legal or illegal under federal law?
Marijuana is considered an illegal contraband drug under, uh, federal law. And this puts you in somewhat of a conundrum because you do, you are required to, uh, enforce both. The federal government has indicated that it is not interested in individual patients, uh, growing their own marijuana, um, for medicinal, true medicinal purposes. It's the, um, I don't remember the name of the business, but the, the marijuana to-go, the, the mobile marijuana sites, the dispensaries storefronts, that kind of thing, that, uh, are, that seem to be more the focus of, uh, federal efforts as well as, uh, grows that go nowhere near a medical marijuana patient but are packaged for sale and go all over the country.
Well, and I, I know that I was particularly troubled by the situation that Ms. Tapia brought up about Tevison, you know, already a disadvantaged community that's, uh, now looking at, um, taking matters into their own hands in terms of just protecting their own local water supply um, due to illegal marijuana grows. I, I think that Tevison probably can't be the only community facing that problem. Um, and, and I know that in addition to enforcing both state and federal law, I really take seriously my job to keep our communities safe. Um, and I don't feel that this board is doing the job of keeping our communities safe if, uh, communities like Tevison are having to take those actions and if our residents feel unsafe, uh, like the gentleman from Lindsay mentioned, um, with neighbors growing marijuana the way that they are. So, uh, just some additional context to consider. But I know that Supervisor Cox wanted to go through this, the, the list real quick and...
And I hope I clarified, ninety-nine is not a magic number anywhere.
Do we want to go through and, and Debbie, you just want to go through each point, each, uh...
That, that's in reference to the, the cooperatives. Right now, I believe we have one dispensary in Tulare County, is that correct?
One that we consider to be within, relatively within the guidelines.
Permitted.
Supervisor, where they said permitted, is it permitted?
No, it's, it's not permitted. Um, the board does have in its ordinance, which is in front of you, a permit process. However, um, the city of Anaheim faced a lawsuit and an appellate holding that caused us to simply put a moratorium on that. We, we have not issued a permit to anyone. A few people may have requested applications. Uh, the permit process is separate from what's called the time, place, and manner regulation. And I believe the dispenser that we're referring to complies with those requirements. Things like zoning, things like security, um, uh, being a certain distance from sensitive uses, matters of that nature.
And it might be, rather than getting to the specifics, it might be easier for, um, or more productive, I should say, um, to sort of look at the options overall from a broad sense and get a sense of direction as to which option you'd like to go to. And then you could narrow down based on that selection, um, how specific you wanted to get or areas of concern that you wanted staff to address.
I'm looking at option one.
Go ahead. Supervisor, where they... You know, I think you, you struck the chord. I mean, our, one of the primary responsibilities I believe we have as board supervisors and with our other elected officials is the public safety of our, of the people who live in Tulare County. I have, I have, um, I have, am in no way, um, interested, I think, or concerned nor is this board about individual members and their medical needs for marijuana. When I look at these statistics, you know, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars cash, uh, ass, or assets that have been seized, two-hundred-and-fifty-six weapons, five-thousand pounds of bulk processed marijuana, um, the numbers of cultivated plants we're talking about, the number of grow sites we're talking about, it is very, very clear. We're dealing with a much bigger problem and, and our efforts, I think, are not going to be aimed at preventing the individual person from having what they need to grow to take care of their medical needs. It is to prevent three homicides, uh, seven home invasions, uh, and on and on, those kinds of things. We haven't even talked about the fact that, I, I, I shared with the, uh, some friends of mine the other day that I just came back Sunday from watching my son play football in Southern California. As I came back through Goshen, the smell of the marijuana was so strong, uh, I would have thought there were fourteen dead skunks on the road. I mean, literally, we would never allow anybody of businesses or any other kind of industry to create a system of that kind of a nuisance to the public, to the neighborhood for, for these, this... I mean, this is just another, it's another aspect of this. That's not a, it's not the kind of thing where people are killed over. But I don't want to, I would not want to live someplace and have to be, you know, have that as my next door neighbor or whoever. I mean, I was, I don't know where this was, but it was close enough that driving along the road, it was very, very strong. So I think that the emphasis here is, I believe, uh, Mr. Cox mentioned option number one, I believe that's really where we want to go. And that is, we need to continue to deal with the, the lady was commenting, the unlawful growth of marijuana. And I'm not talking about the federal because in the federal standpoint, everything would be a violation. But from the state standpoint of meeting the Compassion and Care Act, our objective here is to allow the people who need the medical marijuana to be able to grow what they need. And we don't want to be involved in their lives. We don't want to cause any problems. But there's this large organization, a large, uh, group of people outside of that that are profiting from this and there's a great danger involved in it. It's much like, uh, alcohol was during prohibition. Because it is illegal, the values are very high, people will do anything to either steal it or to grow it. That results in the homicides and all the other things that come with that. We haven't talked about the damage to families that this creates and the children are taken away from their parents and it goes on and on. So, uh, I, I am very much in support of going in the direction of option one. I, I, and I think, again, to get back to the overall principle of, uh, allowing people to grow what they need, this concept of space and plants is, is, does that. If you only, you know, here's one we haven't talked about, but we've seen pictures. Some of these plants grow to be the size of orange trees. And so, and they have multiple heads. So it's not like we just have one plant producing one pound of marijuana and one, one plant may produce several pounds of marijuana if it has various, you know, if it's able to grow different seed heads. So rather than focusing on really the numbers of plants like that, I mean, I think it should be a small number and, and a, and a, not to exceed a certain amount of square feet, adequate to provide for the needs of the individual who needs it. And that will deal with the issue, I believe, of, of allowing those folks to grow what they need. And then we can concentrate our efforts on protecting the public from the public's health.
But, but still in compliance with every other aspect of the county's existing ordinance?
Right.
Supervisor Sheeda?
I think it's very clear that the board of supervisors, the members of the board here are not, have, do not have a direct issue with medical marijuana. I have personal friends that it, it has helped. We have a real issue is public safety. And the first homicide directly tied to marijuana grow was a half mile from my house. I've had three homicides within three miles of my house in the last two years about marijuana grows. When you start, I mean, as a supervisor, when I first got elected, the, the first calls came in were about roads. Today, the supervisors get call after call about the feeling of insecurity because people, their neighbors are growing marijuana. It's a public safety issue to us, more than it is anything else. The problem we've been left with is the state initiative throws out a law, but it doesn't control the growing or distribution of medical marijuana. Then we are constrained by the fact if we give you a permit, we are drawn into the fact that we are condoning, uh, an operation or a, a behavior that's against federal law, which is against our oath of office. And when I went to school, federal law trumps state law. I don't care what you do in the state of California, federal law trumps state law. But we have a particular problem with medical marijuana is that the states pass this. I personally believe it does help people medically, but we can't control the growing and distribution except on a local level. No one put up a format in the state government, how do we distribute this? How do we grow this? And when you have the amount of plants that we took out, basically two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand plants, you know, that, that equates to, according to Mr. Nunes, sixteen people. We have enough marijuana for thirty-eight thousand people in the county of Tulare that we just, we took out. Not counting all the stuff that we didn't take out. So obviously, we have a problem with the illegal growing of marijuana. And I think what we need to do in the future though, is we need to focus on the legal distribution of marijuana to those, those patients. The one thing we did earlier was we set up marijuana cards for county. Saying that you come into the county and get a marijuana user card. Basically, you give that to your, if you're stopped, then you're probably fine. We only have in six years, how many cards do we have?
The last number I was given was twenty-seven, sir.
Twenty-seven cards in three years, five years. So, you know, something's not right. And, uh, as a supervisor, I would look at option number one. I would say no outdoor grow of marijuana at all because it invites a public nuisance. And I'm not, I, I think ninety-nine plants are way too many. As Mr. Nunes said, I think six plants would probably be adequate. And I'm not in favor of extending any new dispensaries in Tulare County until we solve this distribution issue for medical marijuana.
Supervisor Ennis, would you like to comment?
I think you covered it all. I mean, I, you know how I feel about it, it's a public safety. And my number one concern is public safety. And just like Supervisor Sheeda said, my number one call a year ago was illegal marijuana farms. And that's why we come together and set this task force, the board did up, with dedicated code enforcement officers, dedicated sheriff's officers. And I, I think we, I think they know we're here, I really do. I think they know we're here in my district. I'll tell you, I get about four a week. So, uh, I have, like I say, I have zero tolerance for it. I still have compassion for the people that do it for the right reason. But for whatever that one percent is that uses it for the right reason, there's ninety-nine percent that's doing it for the wrong reason, so.
I think the other thing I want to add, uh, is we do not have jurisdictions and city limits. And you have cities that have no marijuana ordinance at all. This is for the unincorporated communities, uh, outside of these city limits. So there's some cities still wide open. But, uh, I feel that Tulare County, uh, we, we're going to limit the production and distribution of marijuana.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead, Counsel.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine, go for it.
I, I was just going to suggest, um, when your board has finished its discussion, if we could go back a slide to what listed the, um, uh, basic requirements of our ordinance, our own ordinance. I don't think that, I don't know, that's it.
That's for individual.
Go back again, not, go back generally. What are you looking for? I'm looking for the...
Collectives.
The current medical marijuana individual.
I'm looking for the collective.
Okay, there we go. Um, it, if, since we're going to be charged with drafting something for your board to review, if I could perhaps run through those and, and ask if my understanding regarding each of those things is correct.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I'm not sure you've really finished your, uh, discussion regarding the concept generally.
If I can, Supervisor...
Because underneath, under option number one, collectives and grow sites and dispensaries would, would be banned.
Correct. I, but there are other things that would relate to growth, even if you're growing as an individual. It's, you know, are you going to have to have an...
That would have been on the individual slide.
Yes, but some of those things apply to individuals as well.
Yeah.
Okay, if I, if I can, um, I agree with those, option, option one, that there should be no more storefronts allowed, that we need to have a discussion as timing out the existing one. Uh, I don't know how you say that legally. Uh, no mobile dispensaries, uh, no collective grow sites, that we need to limit the number of plants per parcel, not per site, but per parcel. We need to, uh, create a residency option. Uh, part of our problem is we have folks coming out of LA growing their marijuana here. So we need to create a residency, a requirement. Whether it be a, a plant count or a square footage count, I would support both. Uh, the set packs are already there, the out of public view, I think, is already, uh, there. But I, those are just a few things that I think we ought to add to this is the residency requirement. And then, uh, limit the number of maximum plants per parcel and then completely ban collective grow sites and med, or, uh, mobile dispensaries.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the residency requirement, because there's quite a bit of litigation over what is your residence and whose residence is whose, uh, I would, uh, suggest to your board a solution adopted by the county of Tahima, which skipped altogether the question of who lives where and simply dealt with ownership. If you own the property on which you're growing, then, uh, that is permitted with other restrictions. Or if you do not own it, you have a notarized, uh, permission from the owner of the property to do so. And those two things are pretty clear, as opposed to saying which residence is, is which and having to litigate over that.
Would you be amenable to that?
That'd be fine, yeah.
Would the board agree with that list? Is there anything that needs to be added or, or taken off?
Well, I think we need to, uh, make clear whatever we have as guidelines now was still staying in place. These are the additional findings that we're going...
Tighten it up a little bit.
We, we would be making some changes with the statement if there to be no collective storefronts, et cetera. We would be making some changes to clarify that those are not permitted. And the legal term you're looking for Supervisor Cox is amortize. We would amortize existing compliant, uh, operations over some period of time. Uh, we would have to research that and bring that back to your board, uh, with the ordinance draft. Uh, the, what I was hearing was, um, not more than so many plants. I heard the number six, I haven't heard other numbers. And, and a size limitation per parcel, but I haven't heard the size limit, the numbers, nine by nine, twelve by twelve.
We'd either do the number of plants or a size. I mean, if you do a size, you're, if you say, uh, some cities have a twelve by twelve, that could be one plant. So I, I'm saying the more, you know, liberal way in support of the medical marijuana patient would be to the number of plants. And, you know, we said six, I'd be amenable to eight.
Well, and, and just, I, I know your board is aware...
What we're trying to do is achieve Supervisor Ennis's, uh, goal here is shut down all these illegal grows.
I, I'm sure, I know your board is aware, I've seen, I, I know you've been to grows. Uh, the reference to the size of orange trees is not an exaggeration. They're plants big enough that I could stand under.
However, Kathleen, if they have to be within locked premises and so forth, that has a way of limiting it.
That does make a limit. And if we keep the restriction that we're talking about, something that is connected to a residence, not a separate, uh, greenhouse or other separate building, um, then yes, you would, in most cases, I'm sure, you would be limited to how high these things could grow and how wide the span of the, the plant could be.
Okay, any other questions or comments, board members?
I, I'd kind of look at all the staff sitting over here and ask if there's anything that anybody feels we don't have clear direction on to bring a draft back. Referring to staff, sir. Okay, I think we're good.
All right. Uh, that concludes, uh, board discussion and direction on this item. Uh, there will be, uh, an item coming back for board approval, I assume, at a later date. Um, and I thank everyone for coming with us in this special afternoon session and hope everyone has safe travels back home. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.